Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Wednesday, March 29, 2017, now called to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by Local Access Program. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting?
I'm not recording, but I'm from the press.
You said your name for the record.
Oh, Gus Steve, Auburn News. I'm not recording, but I've got to.
Okay. If there being none, please raise and join us in a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to remind the audience that applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. I'll turn the meeting over to Matt for an issue that we have to take up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I request a motion to move up agenda item, member discussion item two, additional content? Motion?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Okay, thank you. Item additional content is related to the vote taken at our last meeting on March 22nd regarding three gerom. As part of that public hearing, we've learned that test holes have uncovered new information and the plan is needed to be revised. So applicant is here today, and before we get into it, I just need a set of motions so we can get back into the open meeting. So please have a... There was a... We're actually two separate motions to approve, so I need two separate withdrawals, and one of them will be on account, Mr. Regan made one and Mr. Brooks made the other.
I withdraw my motion.
I'll make, withdraw my motion.
Please three of you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And the next one, Mr. Brooks' motion, withdraw the motion to approve.
I'll make, I'll withdraw that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And from there, we will be looking for a motion to reopen the hearing.
Make a motion to reopen the hearing?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so for the open hearing matter, and I only have to do that because Mr. Weaver was the chairman during the matter, I just turn the chairmanship back over to Mr. Brooks for the open meeting for three gerom.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again. Patrick Burke of HSA T Group, Civil Engineer representing realty, here with the owner. We had a previous approval with three gerom MAV for a garage and drainage structure and parking lot improvements. We did Burke tests out there to determine the soil, the plates confirmed what was on USDA maps and groundwater elevations. From the original, we'd originally assumed it was greater than six feet. When we went out there, it was actually forty inches, so we required a modification of the drainage. So what we did, we kept the drainage system and the handouts with those. We updated, revised the plans to have the subsurface system in the same location. We required a lower profile system though, and since it was traffic area, we switched to concrete chambers instead of that's what we had before. We'd like to vacate the old approval and report with the revised plans.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. So having spoken with both Mr. Strahock and Mr. Burke, no less than twelve hours, regarding the test holes and results, I also spoke to our peer review consultant Quinn Engineering, who witnessed the test holes at the time, I believe it was Friday last week.
Yes.
So as part of the report, what Mr. Burke states is accurate, the groundwater was at a different level, so it adjusted the drainage system. So my understanding is it would be important for Mr. Quinn to review the new proposal and provide us comment in advance for the next meeting. And that's it, I guess.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
The way we gotta...
The way we have to do it.
Yeah, it's right whatever you do. He does our peer review, it came out that it was at forty inches and not what was originally stated, so we'll need to have him review what you're currently proposing, and then we'll hope to get his response back prior to the next meeting, so it'll maybe vote at that time.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to continue?
I make that motion, and the date would be the next meeting, April 11? It's April 11.
Yes, but you won't be there.
I won't be there.
And you are one of the votes that we need.
So we need to go to the next one.
Twenty-fifth?
April 20.
No.
Yeah.
That's right.
April 25th. Yeah.
All those in favor?
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote. April 25th, 7:00 PM, Matt?
Seven o'clock.
All right, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, just a question for the applicant. So these are the byes planned as to give the drainage jobs to Mr. Quinn already today. I saw that I spoke to him.
I spoke to him.
And it's something that you might even be able to crank out for us tomorrow. So it shouldn't be, and I told this to Farak already, I have your decision basically drafted already, just a matter of hearing from him, with the timeframe allotted, and unfortunately, Ms. Donover will be absent, I could have that decision ready at the meeting, so there's no appeal period, so it can be done right about that time, so.
I put my shovel away again.
Sounds like we might need them.
It is what it is, I appreciate everybody's help and input, I really do, thank you very much.
I do have a question, the chair. What type of drain pipe are you using, what's it made out of, PVC? Cast stands, total building, the floor, the water separator, what about on the site?
For the site, it's scheduled PVC. So it's heavy duty.
Second, John?
December 25th.
December 25th, thank you. Thank you.
Chairmanship back, please. Reorganization.
We're going to hand the meeting back to Matt for reorganization that we need to take.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In light of the departure of Mr. Weaver, who the board and I certainly appreciate his time and tenure here with the Auburn Planning Board, his contributions have been very helpful for us, and I certainly want a lot, and wish him the best and service, but here we have to reorganize, and in an event that Mr. Weaver was absent, Vice Chair would take over the meeting, but not formally as chairman, so I entertain a motion for a chairman.
Make a motion for a chairman.
Can you specify?
Ross.
Mr. Brooks?
Second.
Sir, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Brooks, grab the chair for a vice chair.
Do we have a motion to nominate a vice chairman?
I nominate Jason Faber.
I nominate Wendy Steinhill, but you've already had it, so.
Yeah.
I'll second the nomination of Jason.
So we actually can't second this, should the chairman? In the interest that we do have a hearing later in which we have to accuse Jason of absence, we should nominate a temporary vice chairman for tonight, and then hold for Jason when he's here.
I love to do that though, it's not bad.
I can understand that as well.
Okay, all right, I do want to resend it, I'll resend for tonight.
Sir, another motion.
You're rescinding the nomination of Jason.
The nomination of Jason Faber.
We'll wait until...
Sure, is there a vice chairman for this evening?
Make a motion to nominate Wendy for vice chair for just this evening.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We have several public hearings tonight. Seven o'clock, an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaw, section 2.2 zoning map. Matt, can you explain to us?
Yes, so seven oh one, we have a motion to open.
Make a motion to open it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So this is a minor amendment to section 2.2. This is a date update on the flood insurance rate maps, which previously stated that the maps are updated in 1991, wherein the most recent maps are 2011. This is a minor date change for this section.
Okay, so make a motion to make that amendment to the zoning bylaw, section 2.2?
Before we do this, we have to offer public comment and then close.
Is there any public comment on this bylaw? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to close.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to move.
And make a motion to approve the amendment as for the updated date.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a second, zoning bylaw amendment, an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaw, section 4.1.2.1 floodplain district. Explain that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is an update to a section which addresses the building code, which had been updated. It used to read a specific section, and now it's been generalized under the regular code for 780 CMR. This also is in regards to the floodplain insurance map section.
Court members have any questions? Any public comment?
No map changes? No map changes.
Make a motion to open the hearing.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question again, introduce yourselves.
Would you please stand up and introduce yourself, sir?
My name is Jerry Warren, Jerry Warren, 16, Fox Run Circle in town. I just heard floodplain, I just ask, is there any change in the description of the floodplain?
I'll through the chair, there are no changes in the maps, thank you.
You have a motion to approve?
Close.
Close.
Make that motion.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaw, section 4.1.2.1 floodplain district.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Elizabeth. You have a third zoning bylaw amendment? It's an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaw, section 3.9.4.6, electric vehicle charging stations.
Make a motion to open it, right?
A second.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, for the work of the zoning bylaw review committee, this adds a section under the accessory use chapter. This would be for use, accessory use allowed in all districts. This may be authorized by special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Electric vehicle charging stations must comply with all relevant standards of the zoning bylaws, but this at least puts them in the bylaw instead of using the best associated use to describe them. As we know, we've had a couple in town, and want to make sure that we have them identified properly for the future.
Any board discussion? Any public comment? You have a motion to close the hearing?
We've got motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote?
Is there a motion to?
Motion to approve?
Make a motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Fourth zoning bylaw amendment, an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaw, section 3.9.5, temporary commercial activities.
Make a motion to open the hearing?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is simply a renumbering as a result of the electric vehicle charging stations. The temporary commercial activities, as well as the definition for it, didn't have a number, and it was floating within another piece. It seemed like an error waiting to happen, so it was given its own subset and renumbered.
Okay.
Any board comment?
No.
Any public discussion? Do I have a motion to close hearing?
Make that motion to close the hearing?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make the motion to recommend.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Fifth bylaw amendment, an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaw, section 3.3, temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matt?
Thank you. So as you know, last town meeting in October, we voted to approve bylaws for the medicinal marijuana. This is as a result of the November ballot question, which passed the use of recreational marijuana throughout the state of Massachusetts. What we're doing, as well as many other towns, are proposing a temporary moratorium. This is a temporary ban for the sale for a period of 18 months while legislation continues to work on how to govern these sites. For medicinal use, there was guidelines through the Department of Public Health, and we're anticipating that those would be released according to the schedule provided from what's called the Cannabis Control Commission, it's being established as a result of the ballot. They're supposed to release legislation by March 15 of 2018. This gives us time until December of 2018 to take that legislation and turn it into a town bylaw, hopefully for a fall town meeting in 2018. So in the meantime, this moratorium proposes to ban it, the sale for that period of time.
For the 18 months.
Correct.
And we should need to have a bylaw in place by that time, I'll refer to whatever was left with the state, from the state.
Right.
It's like by right.
Yeah, well, one way or the other, not exactly, but there's a point in time where they will want the towns, it's April 1, 2018, to have at least a bylaw or moratorium in place. It triggers a lot of chain, different chains of events in the approvals and what would be allowed. So this is just a temporary moratorium, and this is also a template, what's been approved by the town of West Bridgewater, Mass, has already been approved by the Attorney General's office, so us self-allowed towns are...
The bylaw that they wrote.
Right, and we're adopting the same template for this moratorium.
Any board discussion? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Elizabeth. Make a motion to... Make a motion to... All on the paper.
Second it.
Okay.
Aye.
Elizabeth. Okay, thank you.
Seven oh one. Seven oh one.
Yep, very good.
Yep.
Good to go.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
May, may I request that we bring back up a member discussion, additional content, item two?
Amendment of the Auburn's 4121.
It's just additional content, just to move up the agenda one more time, another item.
Do I have a motion to open the hearing on amendment number two, an amendment of the Auburn zoning bylaw, section 4121 floodplain district?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Sorry, sir, it's not necessarily that, it's just the additional content of it too right here. It's just something...
Additional content.
Just wanted your decisions.
So you want to bring these up now?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to pull up the additional content, working decisions. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just, I think some folks are here for this, so I wanted to make sure I touched on it. The decision for the reserve at Ashworth Hill was reviewed by legal counsel from both parties, and some minor amendments were suggested to the conditions. These don't change the overall language of any of the conditions, it's just legal recommendations, so if the board, if you're so kind and both parties are here just to have the two members that were voting on it sign this piece, and I'll still have to acquire Mr. Weaver's signature. Notable changes.
Is that a chance?
Yes, it's just you and Mr. Regan.
Ready for 7:10? We have a hearing at 7:10 PM. The applicant is Jessie and Allison Berulka, a request to rescind approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled 18 Grove Street from 2008 that includes an extension of roadway, construction of a cul-de-sac, and creation of two building lots on property located at 20 and 22 Grove Street. Can you view the applicant?
Yes, I'm Allison Berulka.
Have a motion to open?
I'll make the motion to open it.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I was hoping that I could, I guess in 2000, I bought the property recently, and I was, it's in the town plans as two separate lots, the property that I bought, and I was hoping that I could incorporate it into my property, which is next to it, and it's not, I don't want it to be a buildable lot anymore, so I would like...
So you want to add the two buildable lots that when it was sectioned out in 2008?
Yeah.
Two yards and just leave it as additional land on yours?
Yes.
And I think originally that may have been the way it was with that property.
Yeah, the previous one where I had subdivided it.
Subdivided and then passed and then...
Yes.
Any board discussion?
I'm not sure how that's done, I think you have to have it re-recorded in the registry of deeds as one lot, moving the subdivision, if I'm not mistaken there.
Is there a couple ways to do this, that is one, that would come after the board takes a vote to rescind? But through the chair, this does correct an issue, and I think it had been advertised for sale for a while, but there was some complications with the way it was left, and unfortunately, the person who subdivided this passed away, and it was just kind of left, nothing ever happened to it. So Mr. Luca purchased his house at 18 Grove, this was all one law, that he sent Mr. Brooks, and they're just trying to return it to that state.
Yep, be nice. Any further board discussion? Any public comment on this, on Grove Street?
Jeremy Warren again? There's no use change, is that so?
No, I'm not, I don't have a plan for it, just, I like that I live on a dead end, and I have extra property to make this supply.
I...
That goes downhill anyways.
Yeah, it goes to railroad tracks, it's what it is.
It's dangerous.
Does it show up now as separate lots on the assessors' map, so it's re-intaxed it, a couple of separate lots, it has building lots, initiate bringing it back to vacant land?
Should, yeah, should. You need to do the due diligence. It should, by the registry of deeds, probably go to the assessors and initiate something, but I would check on it once you complete it and have it on the...
Okay.
Give me back. Okay, do we have a preferred...
Separate lots, you just pay the tax on it, keep it on the value you own the book.
We can discuss that.
So I could keep those two separate lots?
It is. Let's see why you vote.
We can get into that coming.
Yeah?
Sure, so this, in theory, would make them two lots until you came back with an A.R. plan of your own. So, because you can't affect your lot one, which is 18 Grove Street, okay? That was released at the time of the covenant.
Right.
So it can't be affected by anything that happens with the rest of it. So even though they're under common ownership, they're still, will end up as, you'll still have 18 Grove, and then you'll have one large parcel, we'll call it 20 Grove, okay? And the paper street. That's what ends up happening, you're right. Well, the cul-de-sac would disappear, and it gets absorbed with the lots, so this would create two, but upon the vote from the rescission, you'll be taxed for two until you submit an A.R. plan to combine the lots, and Mr. O'Connell...
Then she can combine them, and they'll be all as one.
And Mr. O'Connell will likely advise you.
Okay.
Any further?
I would have a question, I was just going to make a push.
Any further public comment? Do I have a motion to rescind?
I get motion to rescind.
Do I have a second?
Motion to close.
All those in favor?
Close the motion.
Motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
One second.
You vote, do I have a motion to rescind?
Make a motion to rescind.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Okay. Matt, we are set for 7:15?
Yes, sir.
We have a 7:15 public hearing. The applicant is O'Reilly Auto Enterprises LLC, requesting a site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the demolition of an existing building and new construction of a retail store on property located at 700 Southbridge Street. And this property is at the corner of Warren Road and Southbridge, Waterman Road and Southbridge Street.
Make a motion to open the hearing?
Open the hearing?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The applicant?
I am.
Okay.
Lawrence Roy, representing Face Air Design and O'Reilly Auto Parts.
I am Josh Willing, professional engineer with Boulder Engineering, CEO of it. So let's see here, the proposed project is at 700 Southbridge Street. The former use is Auburn Town Cleaners, and the existing footprint of the building is roughly 7,000 square feet. Our proposal is to, we're all familiar with the location?
Yes.
From this is across the street, Waterman Road, directly toward east here. And so the redevelopment includes construction of just over 7,200 square foot, single-story O'Reilly Auto Parts. We do encroach into the, we have two frontages here, Waterman Road and Southbridge Street. We do encroach into the Waterman Road. Front setback, we have obtained the variance for that from zoning board of appeals. We're currently in front of zoning board for special permit for our use within the Aggregable Protection District, Zone 3. We've received mass DOT approval, we're currently in front of Conservation Commission, had one hearing with them, they wanted to do a site walk. They did that this past, this past weekend, we're scheduled to be back before them on April 12. We are proposing 27 parking spaces, the majority of the parking for customers would obviously be located, you got a front door, we have accessible spaces here, full movement driveway proposed on Southbridge Street, that's what we received the DOT approval for. When we had a meeting with staff, originally, we only had the single driveway. Fire department indicated they would like a second driveway for, to be able to egress the site with emergency vehicles, so we have proposed that driveway on Waterman Road. And in addition, we have eight spaces located out back that'll primarily be used for employees as well as any local dealerships that are, have a wholesale account with O'Reilly Auto for parts. Deliveries will be made through that, that rear area. We are reducing impervious slightly on the site, roughly 450 square feet, so I'm not going to wave that banner too, too strongly. We are doing some other stormwater management improvements, including a fire retention cell here. And then we're taking the rooftop runoff, and we're putting it into infiltrators to provide us, you know, what groundwater recharge we can on the site. We're bounded by a resource area on one side, groundwater is, you know, not that deep, but we're doing what we can for stormwater management. I think Conservation is relatively pleased with that proposal. I understand that you folks may want to have train it in the site peer reviewed. Do you understand that? Past practice of the board, so no issues there, if that's what you'd like to do.
Matt, the plan we looked at earlier, it has this strip that was 10.2 feet, I believe, on, parallel with Waterman, and it had that rear exit. And I thought that was a way that you were going to try to go down to the side to get to the back spaces.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's actually the existing conditions plan that has the driveway. It's proposed one of the...
Correct, the existing.
Has the driveway down the side?
Yep.
It went to the old truck from Fish Place.
Customarily, it's been my thought and that of, sometimes of the board, to restrict the number of curb cuts onto a side road that go through a neighborhood and direct that traffic through that neighborhood. You know, it's a thought that the reason for the frontage in the highway business is that you have frontage on Southbridge Street, not on Waterman Road. And now we see the fire department exit this one, and then a way to access your eight spaces in the north end as a, as a third driveway. So, I don't know how the other board members...
Only, yeah, that, I mean, that's the only driveway on Waterman to enter the facility, right? And the...
Which one are you talking about now, the one closest to Southbridge?
The one in the rear. The one out front is an exit-only, and from our standpoint, we'd be, if, if, if fire hadn't requested it, our original plan was to not have that driveway on Waterman at all. Potentially, that could be restricted to fire exit-only. We do need the one in the rear because, just based on the way the auto parts business works, that's where the delivery door is, that's where, you know, the, the dealers...
It currently does not have a curb cut there.
Correct, correct.
And I, I'm not sure, and it's blocked with rocks so that, you know, since no one could access the back end if you've been by there. And I'm, I'm not sure if that's as a result of us not wanting to have it, the traffic going through a residential neighborhood or not.
Through the chair. And with Waterman Road in particular, trying to get off of Waterman Road onto Route 12, and you can say that's going to be an exit-only all you want, but that, you and I both know, it'll be used, you know, however anybody sees fit. But trying to get off of Waterman Road now, across two lanes of traffic onto, it's gonna, it's already bollocks there, and by adding two additional driveways, I can just see that, is there any way possible that that building could be situated differently on that lot?
The site is so constrained.
Didn't we look at...
Sorry, one of the other things that we've been, you know, talking about with the master plan, and, you know, is having these buildings closer to the street to give it a, you know, a different feel. And by having, you know, this big parking space in front of, you know, in front of the building, it goes against, you know, some of the things we've been trying to accomplish. But I think, like, I agree with Mr. Brooks, the, the additional curb cuts on Waterman Street, not a good idea.
Well, if I could, functionally, the site plan, the business won't fit without the driveway to the rear on Waterman. I mean, that's critical for this development to move forward. The one out front, it could be further restricted potentially to whatever level fire is satisfied, that it, it wouldn't impede their ability to, to access the site in case of emergency. In terms of the master plan, I think, you know, I'm, I'm, I understand that's probably a work in progress. It doesn't necessarily jive with the front setbacks that, that exist within zoning today. I understand the plight, the desire to get there.
Right, right. And this is the opportunity, and, you know, we appreciate that, you know, it's a great, you know, reuse. We're happy to get it back on the rolls, you know, just wondering if there was a better way to place that building on that property, uh...
It's a tough site. I mean, we, we kind of had to take the shoehorn out to, to get it to fit there, and it fits, but there's very little wiggle room to do anything differently in terms of layout.
And the size of the building is critical?
Yes.
To the...
Um, they typically are, you know, I think this is even smaller than the norm. Typically, they're 7,500 square feet to 10,000 plus square feet. So, again, we really had to get the creative juices flowing, and O'Reilly's had to accept some deviations from their standards to get this thing to work to the extent that you're seeing it today. If I, if I could point out a couple of things relative to existing conditions versus proposed. Again, we're making tremendous improvements to stormwater quality on a site today. We're getting rid of a dry cleaner use that's historically been there. We're pulling the development between 10, 40 feet away from our nearest residential neighbors to the north, and we're, we're adding buffer to that. There's a pretty dense vegetated buffer there today. We're adding significant plantings overall, not just in that area, but overall. We're proposing 16 new trees and over 75 plantings, again, on a site that's pretty pinched. And I, I understand the desire to limit curb cuts. That's something that, again, we started with, one on Southbridge, one on Waterman. And it's really through the evolution of discussion with staff, with the second driveway, the exit-only on Waterman was added.
The, you did get the variance for both setbacks off Waterman and also on Southbridge Street, the 40-foot setbacks?
No, we comply with Southbridge Street.
So it has to be with one.
Problem is, the old, they have two curb cuts on Southbridge Street. They cut everybody down to one when they redid the road. It's made a mess over there, getting it out of places.
Well, the thing is, too, I mean, it's, if you had to do it, but it's right near the mouth of the road. All the cars are going to be queued up anyways. There's almost always someone there. Can you, Josh?
Yep.
Can you, you can't on the side parallel with Waterman, you can't, like, trim, uh, where the landscape buffer is, and then trim a little off the building, and then have enough of a driveway to get down there to unload there, uh... I'm not sure what you gain.
That's, that would...
The reason, it's not so much the curb cuts. We don't like them anyways, but it's the safety of those children that are in the neighborhood. I mean, it's house, close houses and just tons of little kids out there. And they're, they're probably used to some cars, but maybe not as much as there might be if this happened.
And through the chair, and this kind of smacks the same kind of setup with what happened with couple of farms on South Street at the light. The driveway's too close to the intersection, and it's just, it's a nightmare up there. And I can see that this is going to be similar, but would it be advantageous to ask for a traffic study? Or...
Can I, can I give you just a very brief, couple of tidbits of traffic data that we've done based on, you know, we've, we've had the trip generation looked at for the 7,500 square foot building. Again, this is a, almost a few hundred square feet smaller than that. But the trip generation for a slightly larger building is only 16 trips during the peak hour in the morning and 44 in the evening. So 44 trips, meaning 22 in, 22 out. It's a very benign use in terms of traffic generation, especially when you consider that the majority of that traffic are going to be the customers using the facility. The rear is going to primarily be limited to shift changes of employees. It's not going to be a high turnover at that driveway on Waterman. So I, I mean, when you consider the extent of traffic associated with the, you know, it's not your typical retail facility, it's, it's an auto parts store. And with that rear area being limited to, to staff and to deliveries which occur, you know, once every five days, the delivery vehicles are owned and operated by O'Reilly. They'll be instructed not to go down Waterman. Employees can be directed to not go down Waterman. I think a lot of that can be managed, and if there were ever a situation, if you guys had a look-back period and saw that, you know, something was being done that we haven't committed to here, namely that staff won't use Waterman as a cut-through to other parts of town. You know, it's, it's ma, it's a company-owned facility, it's not a franchised facility. They're very accessible, they're a Fortune 400 company, they have over, um, they have over, pardon me for one second, uh, 4,700 stores throughout 43 states. They're, and they're aggressively developing in the northeast, and they're, they'd be a great company. They're very interested in being in Auburn. This is the location that was available to them, and we're doing the best we can to try to make, make it work for them.
Matt?
Yes.
Can we talk back with the fire chief and talk to him about his recommendation of that driveway and the reasons why we may not like it and, you know?
Build well for the curb cuts. Build well for the curb cuts as well.
Mr. Coyle, would you have any comment?
Through the chair, thank you. I was at the DCD meeting when this was discussed, and I, I don't disagree with the fire department's for the need of another means of egress for circulation. But I guess when I'm looking at the plan, I'm wondering, is there an ability to narrow the building so on the southerly side of the building, you would have enough width for a vehicle to pass through? And I'm looking at that, looking at the plan, the bottom left corner, where it seems to be the restriction.
I mean, could you just cut out, redesign the building and cut a little section?
For, not necessarily for, um, for the patrons, but at least for emergency.
A fire driveway?
Right.
Like we do sometimes, even over, going over...
Because I, I recognize the constraint of the lot. It's a very difficult lot and challenging with the geometry. But if you were to narrow that side of the building, or even almost a jog of the building, whether or not you could make that work and extend the building itself more westerly, or lengthen it, lengthen it in a westward direction?
It's a, through the chair, could I address that? So it's a good comment. I think we have, that's the wetland side, we have topi, we have topographic constraints there.
Would it require you to fill wetlands to do that, or would you require utilizing retaining walls? Or, I think the concern with conservation is that you not fill wetlands. I think they may be working closer to a wetland, but I think there's a balance here of public safety, of countering the means of egress for fire. You know, I think that's something that, if it's working closer to the wetland but not in a wetland, it might be something where it's an existing site for redevelopment, might be worth considering.
So, again, through the, through the chair, I think if we were to carve off the, the back left corner of the building, right, we're, we're right up against it there. And again, there's topo that occurs there. We'd still be looking at a curb cut at the rear of the site on Waterman Road because you wouldn't be able to turn a vehicle all the way around at the back of the building. We'd still be stuck with that driveway.
Just give one curb cut, not two.
You would eliminate that curb cut.
I'm thinking, I mean, if you came in, you could go down, I think what Bill was talking about, they bypass that corner, and then if it ever was allowed that rear entrance, they would exit there.
I mean, I, I, I think the simpler version of that might be to ask fire if they'd be comfortable with some sort of gate on the front entrance.
Through, through the chair, if I could, the problem with the gate is maintaining that during the winter. People tend to plow up against gates. It's going to be something that's a weird constancy, and it's issue when occurring that side. But I did think of a gate when this meeting started, but I am, I am concerned with just keeping that clear during the winter.
Thanks, Bill. Any further board comment right now? We'll come back.
What's a setback off of Waterman Road in the face of the building?
10 feet, you got a variance?
You got a variance, 10 feet. 10.2, a wide enough way.
No. That's what I said to him, John, earlier, could he? Could he skint, make the building thinner?
If you shut the building two feet, you get your 12-foot way, and if you had the variance.
It would be tough for the turning movement?
Yeah.
Through the chair. So that's why I think you, you almost have to accomplish this on the other side of the building.
I mean, I, I hear the comments, I can certainly discuss them with, with our client, but I know that carving off pieces of building and adding back and deviating from, you know, a rectangular box that works for most retailers is going to be a challenge for them.
We're, I don't think anybody has any opposition. I certainly don't, but we're just trying to make it work that you're okay and that we're okay too.
Understood.
And I would trust in your work, that you would be able to get in regular.
I, I really think that operational controls would, would help a lot of the concerns with people taking the left out of that driveway, because it's all, it's primarily going to be employees of O'Reilly's.
You put curb cut on Waterman Road, is that in-only or out-only?
Out-only, to get a fire truck back out of the site.
Josh, if you look at CBS, just down the street, we labored over that exit for a long time, and we had them put an island that comes up that almost blocks it. Cars still come up, and they go around it and come in, come in the other side. I mean, so it's, some of that stuff there where there's no ongoing 24-hour, seven enforcement, it doesn't work. But, you know, I'm fine with you taking another look and coming back if you guys are okay. I know you probably don't want to waste a lot of time, but...
If on the rear curb cut where it's going to be employees and delivery trucks, I think the signage is what would be most important there, employees only, delivery trucks only, period. If anybody else is in there, you know, you tell it at your own expense, something like that. That may appease everybody on the board and in the neighborhood, but just the employees.
And we could sign it to be a right out. Now, again, I know that, but it'll just help reinforce it with employees.
Right turn only.
Well, we would probably make it part of the conditions.
Sure.
Trying to figure a way where we can make everybody happy, it's tough, but it's employees only, deliveries only, and all of those would be told at their own expense, you have to enforce it. But that might appease everybody. And right turn only coming out of the parking lot.
There are challenges, certainly.
Before, we probably can't, everybody's, is anyone, did anything scrap?
No, I mean, not unless this can be pushed up. If you already have the side setback variance, could that be extended further?
For 10.2 feet.
That's it.
And if they move it up front, they're not going to have the proper number of parking spaces that we need for the building.
That's right.
John, anything else? We'll come back again. Any public comment? Would you please state your name, man?
Florence Simonovitch, 2A Waterman Road. Our property is stacked at the other side where the, where the cemetery ends, right at the elbow. We've been in town since 1982. When that first became the curb stand, they told us they would never do a cut there. That's why the stones are there, so that the fire trucks can come over to do whatever they need to do. And they didn't announce that that's the only side of the road that has the sidewalk. And even if the store isn't open, we're going to have trouble with cars cutting through. Right now, when it was the Fish Place and the, um, dry cleaner, it was only a right turn onto Southbridge Street. Waterman's traffic has increased expectant externally because of all the additions to Bryn Mawr and everything. That is a cut-through road, it looks like a minefield. We get beat down at least four or five times a week, pulling in or pulling out of our driveway because everybody's thinking for us. It is dangerous to have a cut there.
When you say, Mrs. Simonovitch, that you're, it'd be a shortcut, but when... but we're not gonna have, there's not gonna be a way for them to go from the back driveway out beyond the building to the front as it stands right now. We're not done with it yet. But as it stands right now, they wouldn't be able to shortcut by going into there and then driving and exiting out on that driveway on Southbridge Street. We would also condition them that they would be right turns only.
And how many people, when they were doing it as the dry cleaners, would come down Waterman to see if there was another way into that place? It just is not going to be a good thing.
Anything else?
Stanley Swornovich, Two A, Waterman Road. One of my major concerns is opposite of the property, Waterman Road at the corner, is a blind side, blind driveway, which is our driveway. Slow down children, et cetera. I have difficulty getting out of that driveway as it is the way cars fly around the corner. Adding another exit in that area just congests that area. And once we allow our egress from that property, who's to stop it from down the line having, you know, vehicles?
Another business.
If you have another business where you can just pick up...
Head to a drive-through.
Drive-through, yes.
Where would be the other business that you think of?
No, I'm saying, down in the future, once we staff allow an entrance to Waterman Road, somewhere down the line, another prop, another company will replace this company.
Like they did the fruit stand.
And it'll be already a precedent, a precedent allowing...
We can condition that, excuse me, we can condition it to the, no?
No, just a second.
Thank you.
You have to make both driveways on Waterman Road right turn only?
Well, I don't know.
Conditioning it is...
I would have a...
Would help with that.
A hard problem, a hard time with both on Waterman. Because the one, as Bill said, you can gate that one for the fire department, but it's with plowing and snow and ice and everything else, it's not gonna be always accessible. But if it's not gated and it's just sitting there even with a sign, that's gonna be a standard exit of that property. They're gonna come in on Southbridge, go out there, take a right and come back. They will. So I need, I, for myself, need to see something somewhat different. And we can, you can, let's see, Matt, I'll talk with the fire chief and see if you can bring something, come up with something that's, you know, equitable to him and that'll satisfy us too. I mean, there's a possible thought on the rear entrance with all those conditions, but not on two of them, for me. But all the other board votes independent.
So I think, if I could, we'll certainly do that. Go back and talk to fire, Matt. I think that the reality is there's, in order for something to work, there's gonna be some concessions on both sides potentially. I understand the concerns with driveway being maintained for emergency vehicles only. Relative to the gate, it could be a different surface. There could be a different curb reveal and try to make it a little, discourage it from, for non-emergency vehicle use. But I don't think we're gonna be able to carve up the building and get something on either side, left or right of it. I think there's, we'll have to look at it and come up with, you know, something that's gonna require some operational collaboration.
Well, I'm certainly willing to listen, I, the rest of the board.
Great.
Just to, trying to think outside the box here, on the, the exit nearest Southbridge Street on Waterman Road, does it really have to be a driveway? Can they curvy lower, grass strip?
Right, that's kinda where I was thinking.
Design something.
But then there's the, there's the maintaining it over the winter that typically, you know, that folks might be concerned with. But we'll, let us talk to fire and we'll see what we can...
Because Bill, in all your time, have you seen anything like rough curbing? Anything that ever works that discourages the people if they wanna get in?
You could, you could do something that was mountable curbing, maybe with a concrete island type of thing. Whether or not you'd wanna put stanchions, plastic stanchions across it. The problem with doing a mountable island, you're still gonna get the truck driver who's to, it's not a problem, he'll go over it. And so it won't eliminate the problem completely. Stanchions are kind of an eyesore. I don't know what other option would stop the truck from trying to go over it. There might be a balance though that unfortunately, you might get some cars trying to go over it too. And go bottom out. So, you know, I think you have to try to think about, is there a way of doing something that's mountable? You wouldn't wanna do grass because it's just gonna sink in it. You'd have to do something hard to the surface. But maybe whether or not you use the bituminous berm or you have a black berm continuing through, so the average person's gonna think it's a continuation of the roadway, but it's mountable for fire trucks. The only concern would be whether or not you check with the fire department if that would be mountable for an ambulance to make sure that, and they may say the ambulance is not as much of a concern as it is for fire apparatus. So they may say, run the berm across it. If you have a black berm with a concrete island, so people see that as it's not a driveway.
Has to be something solid.
Fire department knows it's mountable. They can drive right over it.
Do we allow kick-cod berm in town? Would that be the perfect solution?
That's what I was thinking.
It's mountable by anything. You know, a fire truck, ambulance, but like you said, it would look like it's part of the roadway you have to go around for the traffic.
And through the chair, you'd have to make sure, you look at the detail, how it's gonna work. In plowing operations, my concern is, well, plows us and they deal with it all the time. They love to plow across the street. They're gonna take the snow from the parking lot and push it right across Waterman Road. Well, a big pile of snow and then narrow the road. So make sure we look at snow storage and talk to the management once we get to that point about snow storage. But I would look at something maybe to that effect that would work for the fire chief as well.
That's a good idea.
So you take a look at it and then talk to Matt and then, if you're willing, come back.
I just have a couple more comments over here. In your description, it says you're coming off Southbridge Street from Water and Sewer, but in your drawings, it's coming up Waterman. Just so a peer of you, it's something you don't have to address. And it would be my recommendation, where the house is so close, yeah, there's a lot of woods there, but woods are only good in the summertime. I wouldn't put any deciduous, in my opinion, I wouldn't put any deciduous trees in the back. I'd put all evergreens. Yeah, start with tenteraribites. It's an automatic, it's a natural screen, doesn't look like a fence. They're not gonna see in the wintertime, they're not gonna see in the summertime.
That's not, I think that would protect, well, some of the sites from all over, but also that first house on Greenwood. I think it's Greenwood, the first one.
Yep, it's the, we've got the yellow house right there on the left.
Are there any other questions or comments from the audience? Any other board comments?
No comments, sir. So we've solicited a peer review estimate from Graves Engineering. Look right here. I believe I shared this with you guys already. And this would be for the engineering aspect of this. And having our discussion today related to the egress on the, on the corner of Waterman Road, the one that's farthest from Southbridge Street, I'm not sure who to ask off the back, but I'd be interested to know if it's an acceptable site distance from the proposed curb cut, especially to the left of that's Waterman Road. So living in town, you know, when you come from that direction, the second you get around that corner and there's a car there, it gives you a heart attack.
Well, Mr...
Let alone someone pulling out of a driveway.
The gentleman on two, number two, said that. He goes to pull out the driveway, they're going in and out five times before they actually get out.
So, and I'll answer the question, and maybe someone can call me or somebody, any of the butters, but I'd be interested to hear anyone's opinion as to why that driveway was closed off in the first place. I remember it, I was young. I just, I'd be curious if anyone knows specifically how that took place. No, that used to be a driveway from what I remember.
It was a curb cut.
But it was closed off to put the boulders up.
And I don't know if that was prior to Fuller and the cleaners and the fish.
Right, I don't either.
And I think at one meeting, I'm pretty sure that we said that we did not want that, with the current design, that current, that curb cut back there.
And that building also had an interior driveway where it certainly never get that. In this instance, they don't have that, so you need to be able to access the rest of the site. But I understand. So I'd just be interested if the site distance is something that can be done through the peer review, if there's, if you've done the fully estimate or whatnot.
That right away was closed when Wendy's opened up. That is on our property, that elbow, that's on our property. It is our driveway. The town closed it in a hearing when Wendy's opened up. That used to be the credential building in the back. That was torn down when Wendy's came in. And that was part of Wendy's coming in, was that that right away was closed.
We were, we were actually talking about the driveway at the rear of the site that we're talking about today. When it was open at one point a long time ago and then it closed. But that's a point that they had that driveway that went up on the side of them.
I was just curious.
Well, Matt, if Matt has some questions and you can help him with anything, you're okay with him calling you?
Thank you. But if it's something we can solve in the peer review, that's certainly recommended. But I agree with the applicant in a sense for the traffic study because that's gonna give you like car counts and stuff. And I don't think that's something we're really looking for. I think what we're more curious about, you said, Matt, the OT, you got approval? Can you, through the chair, elaborate on that approval?
Just for a curb cut.
Just for the cut itself, okay? All right, in that location, all right? And so the site distance is just my biggest concern, especially for the one on the back.
Site distance on the rear one? What do we do with the front one? What are the options?
How creative can we be with that?
How creative can you get with the whole site? They said, we're, you know, we wanna, I think you can see, try to make it work, but we want it to be equitable to us too.
Understood. That's all I have, Mr. John.
Thank you. Any other board comment?
We brought our architect too, if there's any questions about...
You didn't even talk.
It's all about the site. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, can you give us a representation of what the front of the building's gonna look like?
Absolutely.
Where it's facing both sides of the two streets, Waterman Road and Southbridge Street?
The fourth of the building will be CMU. We paint the CMU two different colors, tan. And then the, we wrap the portal, we call it, in a bright red. It's O'Reilly red, standard for all of their, their jobs.
Should be green.
Well, their ladders, their ladders are green, so it really pops out.
They have the green and the red, just to be able to see it if you can.
So it's painted CMU and Ephesus.
And down the side, there's no windows?
It's all CMU down the side?
It's all CMU down the side because of their stock inside, that they have racks going.
Is it split face block or smooth block or?
It's split face, mostly.
That's painted the same as the front, obviously. I don't know the correct one.
I think it'll clean up what people are looking at, looking at out there today.
Oh, absolutely.
And you currently, you own the property?
They own the property. They, they secure variances before they close and then they tell us to go get it.
I will say that this is my twelfth O'Reilly's and this is the smallest one we have ever done. So to make the building smaller is going to be really hard for them.
But just think of the increased traffic, you'll get more business.
We'll, we'll work it out.
Yeah, okay. Motion to continue.
I like the motion to continue.
But we don't know what the date is.
I don't think it's gonna take Graves long to, okay, do it, do it there. Then ask the chairman.
Should we do it for the twenty-fifth?
You can go to the next hearing, sir, we receive payment. I'll authorize the peer review consultant to get started. Perhaps the first review comes in before the next meeting.
Till the twenty-fifth?
No, the next meeting.
The eleventh. April eleventh at seven PM? Can we close the, continue the hearing? We have that vote?
I'll make the motion to continue the hearing till April eleventh.
One second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I can sing the jingle.
Oh, I, I mean, exactly. Are we, are we putting...
Frank, when you're on this, John.
Okay, we have a seven twenty PM hearing. The applicant is Impact Fitness requesting site plan approval under section nine point four point one of the urban zoning bylaws for a proposed fitness center use with an existing facility on property located at three fourteen Washington Street.
Make a motion to open the hearing?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hit his vote. You have to say your name and...
It's Vito Colonna with Connor Stone Engineering. And Captain Hesley and Latton. So we're here for three fourteen Washington Street. They're proposing a fitness center.
Can you give a little description of exactly where that is so all the audience and the board members know?
I got an existing picture here. So we're right on the corner of Milbury Street and Washington Street. This building was the old printing...
Inmore Inc.?
Yep, that's right. So right now, it is vacant right now. And, um, friendly, and this is familiar with the site. But it's, right now, there's a existing parking area on the side. This kind of slopes down off of Milbury Street, it's kind of set down a little bit. And as it slopes around, then you have the parking on the side with some loading docks. And so the size of the parcel's one point six acres about. And there's wetlands located to the rear of the property. It's kind of off-site, going up through here. We have met with conservation on that and they seemed, you know, agreeable to the plan. No real issues or comments. We met with them twice so far.
But you haven't gotten approval?
No, the only outstanding item was to get the peer review of the drainage completed with the piece of your board. So once that was complete and signed off, then it would be all settled. We've also gone to...
Excuse me, that's the site as it exists right now?
That's the site right now.
With the one curb cut off Washington Street?
Yep, and the curb cut itself is pretty wide. It's expansive. There's no real defined, you know, in and out. It's just a kind of curb cut. And then after the side, it's actually compacted gravel. So the whole thing is just one wide opening right there. So the proposal itself is to renovate the existing building itself. There's no proposed addition to the square footage or to the height of the building. You'd use the existing structure itself as it is today. They would be redoing the whole interior and the exterior itself too. So the use would be for a closed fitness center. And that use isn't specifically allowed in this zoning district. So we did go to ZBA and they did grant a use variance for both use.
Do you plan on the area off Washington where the gra, it stops being asphalt and it's the gravel, you plant that asphalt back?
Yes, yep. Yeah, right now, that existing gravel is right in through here. And we actually need to expand that gravel, except with pavement. We need to expand that out to maximize the parking on site. So, yeah, that existing gravel is kind of just a right about here. And then we're actually using, the existing pavement goes out there. So we're about the same on the existing pavement limit here. And then we actually wrap around the back where there's no pavement today. We did meet with, the department head a few months back. And one of the comments was from the fire department about having the access around the rear of the building. And at the time, we didn't, the access was only fourteen feet wide. And they asked us to look at options to expand that, to get at least twenty feet of pavement for their emergency vehicles. So the applicant approached the butter and we were able to get easement. So the applicant approached the abutter and we were able to get easement on the abutting land so that we could fit a full 20-foot wide access around the rear of the building. And that way, we could have circulation and conversions vehicles in and out of the site. And before, we were talking about the curb cut right off Washington Street. This would significantly reduce the curb cut down, you know, to a normal 24-foot.
Were you going to move the curb cut?
We considered moving it down here. Yeah, we considered moving it down here, but when we looked at it for, especially the emergency vehicles, it didn't work as well to get circulation right through. To get the vehicle up, through and then turn, you would lose a lot of parking and it just didn't work as well. This way, they can pull directly right up in front of the building and get right there. Coming up and around, it just wasn't as good. The turning maneuvers just weren't as efficient as this layout. Also, when you're coming this way, if the access were down here, that's right after you merge.
Restriction.
Yeah, so you merge and then there'd be people wanting to pull off. Here, if you're coming down, you're able to pull right in and there's still a lane to go right by. So this actually location with these lanes is actually a safer location than it would be down in this area. The initial thought, I think, was just kind of saying ideas to get further light. But when we went back and looked at it, it made more sense just to keep it back towards the building itself. This exit that comes out onto Milbury Street, it was discussed at the time to be an exit only. So we've called it as a exit only with a right turn only onto Milbury Street. So you're not cutting across all the lanes at that time.
Well, if you were here for the prior discussion and others, those people will try to cut across and they'll take a left.
Yep.
They'll try to cut left across and then the cars that are coming southwest on Washington and take a right on Milbury and they're going to go into the site, they're going to be cutting across as they cross that traffic to go into that site also. So that, and then you said you've got a bank in there and, you know, it's, there's a lot of vegetation in there. So you don't actually, you've got to go and look to see what the bank is, but, you know, I think if the fire chief wanted access, if he can get up and goes around the building, comes right around and that exit wasn't there at all, he can still come down through that parking lot and you'd have to pave some of that front, across the front.
Right in here?
Well, no, he comes, go all the way around the building.
Oh, and drive right across.
Yeah, and go across there, being that there would be.
Yeah, we're right now, there's an existing retaining wall through here. We have to take that out. Now the aesthetics across the front, I don't know if that would be preferable. The exit out onto that street here, I know you're saying about people not obeying the signs, but it would take, you know, they would give, the majority of people, you know, would follow the signs. I know there's always the few that don't. Because the major in and out is actually off Washington Street. Especially because the parking is, the only entrance is right here. So no one really wants to park over here. You have to walk all the way around the building. This is just in case, this is spoke.
But right, when they come out from that entrance, you're pointing out on the south side, they're going to go around and go out if they.
If you were trying to cut up that way?
No, people will take a chance. I do it myself. I mean, I might, you know, sneak out if I thought it was coming in. We don't do it, but we're trying to make things as safe as we can.
Yeah, we tried to push it as far down as we could from the intersection.
How many feet is that from the intersection? About 150, 160?
This is about 100 right here, so it's a little over, about 100, 120-ish, somewhere in that range.
Scott?
No, sure, more comment?
Any comments? John, any comments?
I just got a question.
Sure.
In the, toward the top of the page where you have the corner.
Yep.
Is that the property line?
The property line, Dr. Beattie, is right here. And then this outer area has an easement on the abutting land. It's an access egress utility easement.
And, yeah, you're not going to have pavement on that?
There's a little bit of pavement, just this right in there. The property line is there. We probably have three feet of pavement.
How long is the easement for?
It's sort of, yeah, it's indefinite.
Through the chair, I, this is another, like we just reviewed, and coming into that intersection. Creates another, you know, another set of issues. Could it, maybe some creative, like we just discussed with the last property, in an effort to provide the egress that the fire department requires without allowing anyone else to use that entrance or exit?
We could do something, we really define it where, you know, this is angled way over. So it'd almost, make it very difficult to make that turn.
To make a left turn?
Yeah, we narrow it down to the minimum. Fire department's feeling uncomfortable to have one lane. And then, you know, you really kind of.
We did that at C B S, which I referenced before.
C B S, we drive over the island to get in there.
Would it take you less time to go around with the driveway the right way than it's trying to make that corner up?
I would ask that Mr. Coyle, a highway engineer, would have any suggestions?
Through the chair, have you contacted Mass D O T?
Not just, we wanted to get some input.
Okay. I would suggest to speak with them because they may have some input on the driveway on 20. Were you anticipating allowing a left out on that driveway?
Yes.
Considering you have two lanes merging to one in the westbound direction, I suspect they may have some concerns and may want to restrict that to a right out only. And what, if, I would feel as though that that would be a safer option. Physically construct a, as I say, a delta island similar to what you see edging out of the Auburn Mall or by Auburns, where you physically can't take a left, go out unless you almost make a U-turn. And that way, people wouldn't be able to take a left out of that driveway. I just think you're going to potentially have accidents, create a potential for accidents there. They probably wouldn't go so far as to eliminating the left end. So you wouldn't need a full delta island. It would be the one side forcing the right out only. You could just go left out. And then I'm wondering whether or not there's any benefit to do that with the other ride, the other roadway as well. The only question I have on that is with fire, but we have to again speak with the chief whether or not, if we require that to be a design such that it's a right in, right out only. And I'm sort of thinking out loud, whether or not that would be beneficial. My concern would be people coming off of U-20 heading westbound, turning right onto Milbury Street and then going, trying to go left into the facility when you have opposing traffic. So you want to discourage that. And where traffic tends to back up more so on that left lane on U-20 westbound, and people kind of free flowing, right turn on red type situation, they may feel as though, well, they can cut through the shell station and avoid the right altogether because then they can go left into that driveway. So I think that by having that delta island again, so they physically can't make that turn, would help the situation. And I think as long as the chief is okay, I suspect he would be.
Is that this one?
Yeah, because again, you're going to use probably like the slope granted edging with four inch reveal. His trucks can operate over that. So obviously, you don't put, you wouldn't want to put any signs in the area where they would potentially be turning over that.
And that would allow people to come in on the right hand too, so if you're coming down.
They could come right in.
Yeah.
Because they're going to.
Yep.
And they could go right out, which I'd rather have them do that.
Right.
Because you don't want them to take the left out. You'd rather have them come around the back of the building and use the traffic light to take a left.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you can't go out this way, encourage people to go.
Which you'd want to, which is what you want to do.
Right.
Matt, any?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I have the same concerns as Mr. Coyle, but all right, turn only, kind of both. Use Mill Street as your way to get back if you don't like the way the sign reads and you live in a different area in town. But I think that that does help the circulation immensely. And you mentioned the Mass D O T, get in touch with them to make sure they have feedback as well. But you're not proposing any modifications to the building itself or is there any footprint change?
No footprint change. It's all interior and then facade.
Okay. All right, and you'd be restriping the wall, I'd imagine?
Yeah, it's all new pavement, everything new.
Okay, so, okay. Do we do public commentary?
Is there any public comment on this hearing?
I just have one quick question on the side. You just going to paint it? Or are they going to replace it?
There might be some elevations in the back. I didn't bring them colored up.
Yeah, this is the core you moved on, decide to have it and refacing the other brick that's there existing right now.
The way at the end. Yeah, they're not, they're a little small for. So the front just got re, the brick gets refaced.
You can clean up and then the signs on it now is kind of falling apart, so we're going to rewrap it and reface it. But that's all on the left and right and the backside of the building. Probably mostly brick.
Just curious.
The mill may use a big.
Do you have a landscape?
Yeah, we should have one in there. This is one thing we can indeed, front yard. Parking out the front block and. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Captain and I kind of discussed, so we asked the question about relief from the landscape offered. It is within the voids per view, certainly allowed to grant relief on the landscape as well. But based on what's proposed, there would certainly be much more required per our bylaw, so.
That's what's proposed?
Yeah, there would be more per the bylaw, but the visibility.
Well, you've got a lot of woods in the back still.
Yep.
Right.
There's no direct abutter.
But you've got the wetlands and then you're on, then you've got some other land in the Mill Street.
Yep, yeah, the other one is commercial, local, eventually. I think there's the power, there's the power lines that go through the station right there.
May I ask one more question? Sorry, I may have missed this in the beginning. Got cases with conservation and zoning board. Already accomplished those or where are they?
We got the, the variance was granted for the use and conservation, we have a hearing on the 12th.
Okay.
They're waiting hopefully till we get the peer review back.
Okay.
Which we did bring a check out. We got the proposal.
Scott, anything else?
No comments.
John? Wendy? Any more public comment? Close the hand.
I have a peer review estimate from the law, law and art engineering to have peer review services. Good, I already mentioned this, the applicant, I imagine, so upon receipt of payment, we can get the services done. But certainly.
And you're okay with that?
I certainly recommend the board consider continuing until peer review is received.
What do you think we need for continuance, Matt? 11th or 25th?
We can certainly go for the 11th. Are we use two separate?
Try for the 11th?
That'd be good, that way in case.
I make a motion to continue the hearing till April 11th. What time, Matt? Do we already have?
7:05.
7:05.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote. Continue to table.
Continuance you want. Who did say that? Is there anything you'd like to check in?
Yeah.
I make a motion of a recess of five minutes. You can add a ten as vice chair while he's talking.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'll make a motion. You, you make a motion.
Five minute recess, Chris.
The next public hearing is an application by SDC Realty Trust LLC preliminary subdivision. At this time, as chairman, I will hand the meeting over to Wendy as vice chairman. And I will recuse myself as an rebutter to the property and participate from the audience.
So, SDC Realty, preliminary subdivision, under open subdivision rules and regulations for preliminary approval of a new roadway and forty single-family house lots on property located at three forty-seven Rochdale Street. Entertain a motion of opening hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you want to introduce yourselves, please, and, uh?
Good evening. My name is Norman Hill. I'm a civil engineer with the firm of Land Plan. With me tonight?
I'm Connie Pappas.
Connie and David Pappas. They're the trustees of the trust that owned the property.
It's not a trust. It's, it's we own the property.
SDC LLC, yeah.
Yeah, it's an LLC that we created, um, yeah.
Also with us tonight is Jeff Murray. He's a supportive friend of theirs. So, this is the first time you've seen this, so I would just like to give you an overview. It's a, we've applied for two things. We've applied for a preliminary plan approval. We've also applied for a special permit. Our clients would like to build this as an open space subdivision. So I'd like to go through why we feel an open space subdivision would be a better choice for you. First, I'd like to start, um, do you know where this is located? It's sort of in the northeast portion, northwest portion of the town. Northwest portion.
Near the old dump.
The old dump is right here. Right here, it's the old dump. This is Rochdale Street, West Street. What you see in yellow would not be open space. What you see in orange would all be on open space. So, at the very top of the hill, it'd be an eight acre park. It could be used by the residents of the town of Oregon. All open space. Our clients would like to give all of this orange property to the town. So that would be, it's one of the highest points in the town and your master plan is shown as a scenic, potential scenic view for the residents of Oregon. So that's one reason why we feel an open space project would be nice, because if you were to grant the special permit for open space, that would be in the town's future to have that eight acre park right at the highest point in town. It's a beautiful scenery. Beautiful scenic view. The property, to give you a feel as to how big this property is, it's about fifty acres here.
It is.
And another twenty-four acres here. So about seventy-four acres in total, on which they would like to build forty homes, forty, forty house lots, all single-family homes. Now, if it's a conventional subdivision, they would still build forty homes, but they would use every square inch. There would be no open space. There would be no park at the high ground, no open space here or there. All the open space would be gone. It'd all be occupied by big lots of big homes. So that's the difference between a conventional plan and open space plan. Um, this is in a residential R-zone. And another thing that's in your master plan is your master plan encourages, encourages open space projects in the residential R-district. And this is in the residential R-district. The state of Massachusetts has issued many, um, articles and, and discussions about open space. And they prefer open space because it provides a preserved land, where the trees won't be cut. And where people can hike, they enjoy nature and preserve open space. Now, as part of this project, our client will be connecting the town sewer. And it may also connect the town water. So, if you approve this project, I put together a little map to show you where the water will be connected and where the sewer will be connected, because the abiding properties will benefit from. Oh, David, if you pass these over to the, sure, thank you. So the sewer would be connected to our Rochdale Street, out by the railroad and brought up through here. Right now, all these homes don't have sewer available to them. There are many homes on Rochdale Street that have septic systems. There's a river out behind those homes, which could be subject to pollution should any of those septic systems fail. Plus, this is all in your aquifer protection zone, so your water supply could possibly be contaminated by those septic systems. If you let my client build this project, it'll bring the sewer all the way up Rochdale Street. It'll provide laterals to each of those homes and they'll all be allowed to tie in. That's another plus for this project. The water, what we're proposing to do with the water, uh, we had first proposed this project with town water. And then at the, uh, we had a technical review committee meeting with all the department heads. And the, uh, Ken, Ken Smith, the superintendent of the water department, felt it wouldn't be possible to connect with town water. But I've since talked with him a couple of times and he agrees with me. It is very possible to tie into town water. So if we tie into town water, we're gonna connect the water main off of West Street, which ends here. All the way to the water main on Rochdale Street. So essentially we'll loop. So you'll have a loop. You'll have water coming out West Street. You'll have water coming out Rochdale Street. Right, right now, there are issues with water pressure on Rochdale Street. So if you're out fighting a fire in this section of town, you may run out of water. But if we were to loop that and have water feed from both directions, you're not gonna run out of water when you're fighting that fire. So that is yet another reason why we feel this project should get a positive vote. So that, that's my, my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, what is that? You have a question?
Uh, I'd just be interested to see through the chair, something from Ken Smith in writing. The, the letter I have before me here says that it's not possible.
Doesn't quite say that. If you, uh, look at the letter more closely, he talks about a water booster pump that would make it possible. But the issue is that a hundred pounds of pressure will only lift the water about two hundred thirty feet. And then you wanna have about thirty-five pounds pressure from your house so they can take a nice shower on the second floor of your house. And he's saying, we come uphill two hundred feet, it's only gonna leave about twenty-five pounds of pressure. So we need to put a booster pump there to boost the pressure. It says that in his letter, but it's not really clear. His letter is, is, does give you the impression that it's not possible, but I think, I can assure you it is possible. And I spoke with him today and he agreed with me today. It's definitely possible. So as we stand here today, we're willing to connect the town water. Or wells, you know, that's something we can sort out during the definitive process. As you realize, this is a very preliminary stage. And, and, once we get by this stage, then we have to actually design the project. And we get into all of the design details during that definitive process. But right now, we're trying to decide which do you prefer? Do you prefer open space or conventional? And that's the special permit that's really key to us, because my clients, the next step would be to design that project. It's gonna cost them over fifty thousand dollars to design that project.
Which we, we can't.
So if they just wanna know.
We can't do that. And I, I just, just.
Right.
As a point.
So if they just want to know, should they spend fifty thousand designing an open space project or a conventional project? They don't wanna design it one way and then grant the water having say, no, we don't want that kind, we want the other kind. Then they're just wasting a lot of money.
Yes, and that's, here we are.
I have, uh, Matt, Matt sent me a copy of the letters from all of the department heads this morning. So I have prepared some letters to address a lot of those ques, those issues that we brought up. I'd like to give you a copy of each of those letters. David, would you could pass those to those three individuals?
With the understanding that we will not be reviewing those this evening?
Yes, we're not asking to vote. Yeah, we're not gonna ask you to vote on either permit tonight. We'd like to take this all into consideration and, and think about it. We'll come back in a month or so and hopefully can let it sound out.
Chairman, did you have any?
Another question through the chair. On the water main, would you say it's gonna make the local system require a booster station?
It would, yes, sir. And it would also require a pressure reducing valve down at this end. You should tell us on two separate water systems. This one's at sixty pounds of pressure. This one's at a hundred pounds of pressure. So now it would acquire a water booster here. It's gonna require a pressure reducer down here.
And it'll get stuck with maintaining that pressure booster pump station down the road after all the houses are sold?
The, the town would, as they do their other systems in town, similar systems. And we would design it using the same equipment that you have in those existing systems. So we'd have to buy two sets of spare parts from two different companies.
And, and where are you gonna tie the sewer in exactly?
Exactly. Um, just past that railroad bridge on Rochdale Street. You go under that railroad bridge?
Yeah, I know where the sewer ends up there. Ends up there on the left-hand side.
Yep, and, and there's a, there's a culvert that runs through that railroad bridge. Two large box culverts. So we've talked to the sewer department and he suggested we go under that culvert with a siphon. Or we could attach to the side of the culvert, then the pipe, you know, hang on the side of the culvert.
Are you gonna do directional drilling or you plan on open cutting the siphon?
Directional.
Directional, well, dig a pit on the other end and pour it through.
I know how it works. Um.
I didn't know if you.
That's why I asked about directional drilling. What size is the pipe gonna be?
Eight inch.
Dual siphon or single siphon?
Single.
Be better off with a dual.
Well, we can talk about that.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Coyle. Do you have any?
Through the chair, I think, um, several very important issues that we've voted on in the project, but one of them that I think had come up discussion internally has been the use of, uh, the supply of town water. In my discussions with, uh, Mr. Smith, I think his concerns were that it's not necessarily that the water is not available. It is available, but it's available at a cost. And the concern was whether or not the cost became cost prohibitive for this project. So I think that working through Mr. Smith and making sure that he's agreeable to the design that you're talking about doing, first of all, and if he is, I think evaluating what that cost estimate would be to make sure that that's viable option. Cause I think I, I did hear you say it's a preliminary plan and we would then, at a later date, discuss whether if we connect the town water ore wells. So I thought I heard the ore wells thrown back in. I think that's a very important part of this, um, as this goes forward. As to whether or not is it gonna be town water or wells. And I think that's something before you spend a lot of money in designing a project. I, I think evaluating which auction you're going with, um, is very important. Also, in regards to the town sewer, I don't think, I don't, I don't wanna speak for, for Jeff Mitchell. I don't think he's recommending one way or the other to how you're gonna connect to the town sewer.
That's correct.
I think you'll have to do your due diligence and come up with a design, again, very difficult area to go under a railroad bridge, under a large culvert, which is probably an old stone culvert.
It's concrete.
It is concrete, okay. Um, just concerned on how you're gonna do that in working with railroad, very complex sewer connection. So I think those two major hurdles need to be looked at before you do put a large investment in designing a project. And you want to make sure that water and sewer can service this building before you go that far.
Very early on in the design phase, you address those two issues. Thank you.
Matt, would you like to weigh in?
Not, not yet. I'm just curious, uh, public comment and additional public comment.
Okay, and we'll detain public comments at this point. Anyone in the audience like to speak?
Yes.
Please stand up and state your name and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Richard Vinanzi and at four three seven Rochdale Street. I'm basically down about here. Uh, actually right here. The, uh, I just want, my question was regarding the, the development here. Would there be any disturbance of the area that was the town dump? I'm basically concerned from a well water perspective of could that potentially reach something down into the water and make its way down into?
No, so the town dump has never been part of this project. It's never been, yeah.
And could you maybe expand a little bit on the, uh, the yellow there says potential solar farm?
Yes, if you live here, so if this were an open space project, this would all, all this orange, the trees never be cut, all be preserved. So behind it be preserved. The only thing that might go in here someday in the future would be a soul. Which means all the trees are dead.
Through the chair too, if I may, just.
Sure.
A few other critical, uh, points that we've discussed together, I don't know, was that going back to the wells. One of the concerns was that, um, if you did go with wells, forty wells, what, what that potential drawdown would be was a concern, not knowing, having adjacent landfill which the town doesn't monitor. But town water absolutely would be our preference, because, and that's why we recommended that a hydrologist or a geologist person, because I don't feel within town, we have low expertise to determine what the potential impact would be with forty wells drawing down on the water table, what that corner of influence would be. So that's something that we want to look at closely if you don't go with town water. The other concern was the existing firing range. The police have their shooting range, which has been in existence for over ten years now. And we're probably have lots with assuming houses on them. They're gonna be within five hundred feet of the shooting range, which you can't pitch out firearms, firearms within five hundred feet of a shooting range.
Right, right. We're aware of that. Have you had some information about that?
Let me talk to you about the firing range a second. We're all very supportive of, of our police, very, very. There's an existing range right here. Can you see that little gray spy in that satellite image? It's right there. It's only about three hundred feet from that lot line. All right? And the law says you can't shoot within five hundred feet of someone's property without their written permission.
Within five hundred feet of a residence.
Yeah, without their written permission.
Not a property.
Not a property line, oh, okay. Not a property line?
Well, the houses would be about a hundred feet further away, so they'd be about four hundred feet. So these three lots would be most affected by the firing range, but trust me, every time they went to practice, probably everyone's gonna complain. You know, because nobody likes the noise. Probably practice once every couple of months and most, most departments.
And we could move the range for them.
That could be something you have to work out with, with the police chief.
We'd be willing to do that.
I know it's a concern.
Yeah, we, we're happy to do that. I mean, that, you know, that could be moved.
And no matter what you do, you're gonna get complaints, even if they, you know, let them know ahead of time, we've seen this, you know, in other towns where that has happened as well. And that's gonna be a big concern for people.
From the noise.
From the homeowners, from the picture homeowners.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be disclosed that they don't provide the property if they know there's a shooting range there. They don't provide the property.
Doesn't matter, you know, if they buy a, buy a, they don't like the smell. They don't realize, yeah, it's, and they realize later, yeah.
Well, this, what's, what they show a lot of time, they have guns on the time.
I know what you mean, yeah.
So I, I was.
But I don't know that that would prevent it all from happening, because there would be. Just saying that it's gonna be complaints. See why it is. Nature of the beast.
I would say during the definitive process, we could agree to a condition of approval, that that gets sorted out either, you know, they help with the relocation of the range, or they give the range with permission to stay there or something. Something could be worked out. For one, the deeds, everyone's deed, that's within five hundred feet. There are things that could be worked out as a condition during that definitive process.
Any other public comments?
Do I have to stand?
Please, yeah, say your name.
Uh, Lorraine McCovin, I live on three Crowe Hill Road. I'm concerned, well, with a few things, but like the traffic. Um, so I go out running on Rochdale Street at least three times a week and there is no place for, for cars to go. There's no sidewalks. The, the trees are there, you know, you go in like this. Now adding forty more homes in that area, it's dangerous. We added a middle school, so that has added more traffic. Going through that bridge, it's like you have to go like this to go around it, because it's so scary. And I just can't imagine adding all this more traffic to that area. That, you know, open land is beautiful. I love running up there. I should be able to run in that area and I'm petrified.
So for the town needs sidewalks. Do you want to do that?
We're, we're, we're not developing ourselves.
All right, Todd, yeah. So this subdivision will have a sidewalk on either side of the street. We designed this road to be in compliance with this typical cross-section. So you'll have a nice lovely place to walk safely and ride safely, plus it's a bit of a hill up in town. It definitely gets your cardio worked out. And, and one of the other neighbors just asked me before the meeting started, they're concerned about the increase in traffic coming down this road. Now, this road is paved over twenty-four feet wide. But a thought that we had with our company was to make this a dead-end road. Come up here, put a cul-de-sac at the top of the hill. And maybe just put a gravel, emergency vehicle, car path through here with a gate. So then people on parole wouldn't be impacted by any traffic. We think that's a good idea.
Question from the chair. How many feet of a cul-de-sac from the intersection?
It would be about twenty-two hundred feet.
It's too long. Town bylaws.
So it has to be shorter.
Well, that's just for a dead end. It wouldn't be a dead end, because you'd have this gravel coming down here.
So would you put a gate across it? It's a dead end.
Okay, so that's not an option, the gate. Excuse me. Did you have some, a comment?
No, I just, I, I do, ma'am, chairman. Uh, my, uh.
One moment, please.
Sure. My, my main comments regarding the open spaces, kind of a good preliminary question. The, we'll call it the solar parcel, all right? Isn't technically connected to the rest of it?
Doesn't need to be.
Correct, it doesn't need to be. However, if it's going to be usable open space, you do show part of that open space as the access point. So if there were to be a driveway for anyone to access it, whether it's a solar farm or not, if this were to get approved as open space, it would then be destroyed for an access driveway for some of the, the solar.
Actually, we'd give the solar farm just an easement, Matt, just an easement. And they would be using it often during construction, but once that were built, they probably only run there once in a while for an inspection.
So the easement wouldn't be included, sorry, through the chair, can't be calculated with the open space calculation. Landowner and easement.
I'll subtract that.
Not only that, and, and through the chair, and even though the open space doesn't have to be technically connected to the parcel, but there's also no homes whatsoever proposed on it. So they are two separate deeds, one way or the other. And if this project were to be sold to a developer, what developer would want to buy the other parcel that only has open space on it? They wouldn't want it.
They would have to have it to justify the forty percent open space, so they'd have to buy it.
Right. I'm just saying, you're narrowing it down to a pretty small market for making someone buy a large land area that they can't use. But that's just, just my thought. And, uh, so in regards to the wells, and if I can get into this a little bit, in the proximity of the shooting range or even the former landfill for that matter. If, if we're talking wells and this isn't public water, depending on how this goes, and I know that's definitive, you might wanna consider some of those houses close to the landfill as open space. I don't know if you're gonna get forty houses out of it, especially if that's the case.
Three or four down there, that's a possibility.
I think you'd be losing most.
Can remove those.
During the definitive process, we can talk about that.
And, and it goes farther into that. I'm just thinking about as far as laying out the plan, the number of lots that you're looking for at the preliminary level. I mean, those are the big things to consider is can that solar parcel open space? Is the board comfortable with that being part of the project for its open space requirement?
Well, there's a, there is a section in the subdivision regulations that speaks to this issue. I attached it to my letter. Um, just give it away.
But you can't access that parcel unless you cross someone else's land or go onto CSX's land.
No, 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 you have. No, 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 you have, you have access right off of West Street. Right in off of West Street, there's access right there for everybody in town.
Through the chair, you expect people to drive there to access that?
Won't walk there. It's not gonna be the favorite place to walk, this is, you know, this is, this is an old, it's not, not the best place to go, what, there are many beautiful parks around other than this.
I think the, I think the intent for the open space bylaw would be that when you look at a parcel of land that you're gonna develop, you look at conventionally, how many lots can we fit on that parcel of land? And then you say, well, in the best interest of the environment in, in the town and the general public, let's look at preserving some of that land as open space, and that allows us to now reduce the size of the lots, which then also reduces the length of the road, so there's a cost benefit to the developer and a benefit to the town as well. I think that because you can't access that separate parcel, the engineers' office, myself and the other engineer, look at this as though you should really evaluate that one parcel of land as how many conventional lots can you achieve on that larger parcel? And then based on that...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Then based on that calculation, would be what you would move forward with as your open space development. And to Matt's point, we have discussed this, if there's a reduction in the lots, then the area that you may want to consider reducing them would be the area either potentially adjacent to where the actual landfill cap was capped, with the further, at the angle point, anyhow, about six or seven lots up.
Just the landfill.
Right, right, where it connects closest, but also, and again, these are details that because it's very, it's a very complex project, I think you have to look at, and in the beginning of this, is this, is that where you may want to consider the open space, because you're also adjacent to the old salvage yard. We are not sure if there was ever a twenty-one E done on that property, or whether or not, when anyone goes to build this project, unless it's of cash, being funded by cash, as soon as there's a bank involved, they're gonna assume on a twenty-one E. So I think that information as well is gonna be important moving forward to assess the property where it is so close to where the salvage yard was located. So a lot of complex issues that I think that require a lot of attention on how to move forward and doing what's best for everybody involved, and making sure that you take all these different concerns into consideration when you're designing this, because it could change your design completely.
I agree, I agree with all that you said. This, this piece here, we could put a road and a cul-de-sac here, and I think there were eight lots shown on the plan. We'd rather not do that, you know, there are neighbors here that probably wouldn't like that. So that's why, partly why we've done what we've done, you know, so this doesn't get developed with houses. I agree, it's not the best place to go and hike, but I don't think people would, I mean, they do have access here, but you're gonna have a lovely park up here, that's where people are gonna wanna go. We could just take this off the table, we could just do thirty-one lots here, maybe if you have to increase the size of the open space, when they get down to twenty-eight, twenty-six lots. That's a possibility, but I think the town will gain to you by keeping this undeveloped. You know, I think it added in, you know, we've given this a fair amount of thought, and it is legal to do it this way, and there is a section in your subdivision regulations, I've attached it to those letters I handed out. David, can you give your, lend the Mr. Coyle, did you get a package of the letters?
Yeah.
I've got eight of them.
Yeah.
Let Mr. Coyle have a package of that letter, too, so he'll see what I'm talking about.
And I'd like to let this gentleman here who wanted to speak, could you please stand up and say his name?
Oh, my name's Ken Johnson, I live on 4 Crowl Hill Road, it's a long lot, cul-de-sac, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, it's about a three and a half acre lot.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I have a couple of comments. First, the idea of having a park, I mean, obviously we'd like to have the buffer space, these are my neighbors, they live right next to that, but at the same time, to make it a park and make it an actual destination, how much traffic is that gonna cost in addition to, especially if it's gonna become that one, you know, Crowl Hill Road? Ideally, we'd like to see it as being like a conservation lane, something like that, and not an actual town destination, and I think our neighborhood is intended for that. And then secondly, I'm a little surprised to see the number of lots. You know, some years ago, we actually tried to subdivide my own land, had enough frontage, have a lot, bad footage to create two lots, and, you know, SDC Realty was the only one against it. We have a covenant in there that, if it's subdivision of the land, and all my neighbors signed up, they had no issue with it, but to quote SDC, you know, they said, "We have reconsidered your request and are sympathetic to the real estate market condition." I should comment, this was in original two thousand eight, we were in construction, and we could really have used the money at the time, we could potentially sell it. And I think right now, it's just a whole bunch of dead space, but they go on to say that, you know, the Crowl Hill development was based on the premise, the larger lot size would attract people who would build larger homes and expect more privacy. We believe it would be detrimental to all owners and SDC Realty to change the rules. And that was to create two one-point-seven-fourteen lots. What is the average size of a lot?
It's three quarters.
The three quarters of the acre, so you were against the one, a, you know, one and three quarter to take a lot, but I propose a three-quarter of a lot, so I would think that would be far more detrimental to us.
I can speak to that, please, if you'd like, if you haven't been recognized. Matt?
Sure, so there's a very brief answer to that, but I believe the Crowl Hill subdivision was done under conventional plan, way near the sixty thousand square foot lot. This is just being different with thirty thousand square foot lots, but they're responsible to make sure they have forty, forty percent of all available land is reserved for open space. There's just two different design concepts for one, but in regards to the specific trying to divide your own lot, I don't know if it's something the point should discuss now, because it's not on the table, but...
No, it was their own concern, I know, so adding that many more lots to a street that are much smaller size seemed to be kind of contradicting the position.
So they're also looking out for the, you know, actual homeowners on the street.
Right, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just for the chair, it's just two different means to apply, and they could go with the conventional, they could choose the open space, I mean, that's why, that's why we're here today, to discuss that with the board, which one seems even reasonable before, before they get into more of the specifics with the design.
Any other comment from the audience?
Yeah, I'm John McCob, 3 Crowl Hill Road. Is there a design done for the one that's not a open space?
Yes, we have a conventional subdivision design that shows the thirty-two lots up above and the eight lots down below. Sheet's five and four and five of this, this is part of the project down below, this part of the project up above, you notice there's no park, the lots come right down to the cul-de-sac, and here's the rest of the conventional design, so every square foot is here, check it out. This would be a home right down here, cul-de-sac.
Connie, did you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, I would like to respond a little bit about, just to explain something to the homeowner.
Sure.
So my uncle and my sister were managing our LLC, and they have since passed away, and that was their plan to keep the house lots a certain size and so on. And so now that David and I, brother and sister, are still managing this, you know, paying taxes on this open land and not doing anything, we need to do something. So we're not opposed to discussing the size of the lots, we just need to do something. So I'm sorry that that was declined when it was requested. At that time, that was the way we were, or they were managing it, so, and now we need to make some changes now that it's from seventeen. And we're also, just want to say that we are very cognizant of the need for all the neighbors to be comfortable with what goes on, and for this to be done properly, and to manage any issues that might come up, and we're very respectful of that, and cognizant of it.
A couple, a couple of things I, if I may speak, a couple of things I forgot to say, if I may speak, yeah. You need me to rise someday where the town may need to put a water tower here, the highest point down. That would, that's something the town would have the options to do. We have a one-line-all loop, all connected, they wish to put in a water tower here and upgrade their, their system, that's really, could be in the town's future. The other thing I forgot to say is that doing this water connection is gonna be expensive, you know, so forty houses, when you spread a million dollars over forty houses, it's still, you know, if you spread a million dollars over twenty-five, thirty houses, it's, might not be financially feasible. So the number, the unit isn't important, that, that comes, and that's partly why, another reason why we're leaning towards the open space.
Matt, did you have something else you wanted to?
Um, not right now.
Okay. So I think that a lot of work needs to continue to be done on this project, is a few things that don't point it out, that, again, we're gonna need something in writing from the water department that definitively states that it's feasible with the current, you know, existing conditions. And Matt, I think, entertain, to continue, or?
So just want to tackle some of the other memos, just to mention that they are in. So we received a comment from Board of Health earlier today, so make sure you got that if you have it.
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, all right, great. So, and given the, at the time, with it being the March twentieth memo, and Miss Coiles is here, and she may be able to write further comment if you have questions, but long and short of it being, if it's gonna be wells, then Board of Health needs a lot of more information and doesn't recommend support for the project, given some of the site, site details, and if there are any questions, she's here. So Board of Health weighed in on some of those. We also had comments from the building department regards to the open space presidential bylaw, and for an open space plan, the contents of the plan and the application are, and we're not gonna get into this yet, because that's the next hearing, I don't want to talk about it, but these are some things that aren't met on this plan, because it's a preliminary plan.
Right.
So those were pointed out. Mr. Coyle, town attorney chair, submitted a letter also from his department, and he's weighed in on some of his concerns already. Jeff Smith from the sewer department, we had discussed, and we also received comment from the fire department.
And the police department.
And I got an email from the police department, I shared also. So a lot of departments had an opportunity to weigh in, and a lot of this, a lot of the concern was understanding that at the last set of plans we got on March twentieth were related to understanding that there's gonna be wells and private water, because this new information that came out about another opportunity for public water, which would be awesome, as far as I'm hearing it. So I think hearing more from Ken Smith is certainly advantageous for both parties, and if there's, I guess, and not, not in an effort to reduce the lots, I'm just, my personal curiosity regarding the open space requirement for that lot, it's not technically connected to it. And I understand offset mitigation can be done, but it's just not accessible, and that's one of the requirements of open space.
Want to take a motion to continue?
May I suggest, so this being the preliminary plan, if there's any direction we want to provide for the applicant, if there's a modification that we're looking for, any sort of alternative proposal to show more open space, or is there anything specific the board wants to recommend?
I think I would concur with Bill, Bill Coyle, that maybe take a look at eliminating a few of those and adding some open space where it abuts the shooting range, and also the dump. Would be one thing that I would like to see. Scott?
Yeah, through the chair. I can look past a lot of the issues here, the water is, it seems to be a big concern, if there's gonna be wells in there, it's southward, Sturbridge, Charlton come to mind with the issues that they're seeing over there, and so I, the water is really a very big important issue.
Connie?
I have a question, I wanted to understand, I think the two of you, I think John and you, Scott, were a little concerned about, like, if there is a pump, I think you said there's, might be a pump to get the water to go up there, so what is, what is the concern? Because it seems like that's our best bet as opposed to having wells, and that's what we would lean toward doing, we just, I'm just curious, like, you had a question about that, I think, John, that...
My only question was, once it's built, and then it's accepted, approved, the design and all that, and once it's implemented, who takes the ownership of maintaining it? You know, a lot of developments, they take care of it, they hire somebody, and it's a fee, when you live there, just like you live in a condo.
Each of a fee, yeah.
So this wouldn't be a housing association, so I guess we wouldn't be able to do that, or they, the builder wouldn't probably do that, although, although I'm wondering, would it, would it benefit the town in general to have that pressure for fire reasons and so on?
That's up to the water department to say.
So that would be another whole thing, okay.
Bill, did you have something you'd like to?
Well, I would suggest is that because there's so many concerns raised tonight, it may be advisable that once they go back to the drawing board and look at a concept that they feel more comfortable with, that might address a lot of the concerns raised this evening, is potentially meet with, with the department heads, with police, fire, the water department, engineering department, Board of Health, planning, town planner, building commissioner, similar to a DCG meeting, to revisit this. And I, I wouldn't probably do it as a DCG meeting, because I think this, I wouldn't want to lump this in with other projects, I think this warrants its own meaning, and then maybe revisit a new plan and get feedback from all parties involved and are interested in this and moving forward, you know, in the best interest of everybody, before you go back to the planning board. I think we really want to get our feedback, and being the town representatives, and if we, if we agreeable to, that this is the best way to proceed.
That's cool.
This gentleman back here, you had something to say?
Jeff Murray, just one, one thing, one of the planning board numbers I mentioned...
Could you please stand up so we can hear you?
Thank you. The field recognizes that it's a private water district, not a town-owned water district, so that would be something we're looking more help between, with the developer and the, yeah, the district, not the town, water, it's not, not the town's water system.
Thank you. Any other comments, board members, Bill, Matt? So I think Bill made a good suggestion, we could get together on a, not a DCG meeting, but get all the department heads together, so that it can help guide you going forward, and we can make this the best possible development for everybody concerned. So we need a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make it.
Yes, the eleventh or the twenty-fifth?
I think probably the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, give us more time to meet.
Give you more time to meet with all the department heads, and we'll coordinate that.
I'll make that motion for twenty-fifth?
I'll second it.
All the blue paper?
Aight.
Aight. Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I just need to address it, it's not a matter of opening it?
Right, we just want to...
Just try to get everyone to quiet down.
Excuse me, excuse me, please, we're still continuing with the hearing, thank you.
Sorry, ma'am chairman, so the next item, only agenda is the special permit for open space, but with, with Mr. Faber absent and Mr. Brooks recused, you need a super majority for a special permit, so we don't have enough members, so I, we can't open the hearing, we can't continue the hearing, so it's gonna carry it over to the next agenda, which would be here for eleventh agenda, unless you'd like to keep them together.
Yeah, do it on the twenty-ninth.
So in order to achieve and accomplish that, just want to make sure that we have enough time from the day of us filed. Really close, I think that's like the sixty-second day out of sixty-five days, or something like that, so if, if I could receive a letter from the applicant, if he'd be willing to put something together stating that if this falls outside the day until the hearing...
Give you another thirty days.
Yes.
Sure.
That would, that would be appreciated. So this will keep people together.
All right. So now we'll move to the twenty-fifth.
Yes.
All right, well, we're all set now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you for making the trip.
I'll head back. I live in Fairfield, Connecticut, so.
Connecticut Hall, yeah.
But that's, I like to drive, so. It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you for...
There's a switch there, press the button and stand up.
Oh, I remember, I think that chair is the same that it is. You're going to find yourself on the floor in about three minutes.
Minutes, we have another decision to sign.
Thank you.
Matt, what do we got left here? Minutes of February 14th, do any questions? Do we have a motion?
If you're not in this packet?
They were in the previous two packets.
I don't want to make a motion because, was I here on...
You were here, Mr. Brooks was the only one who was absent.
All right, so make a motion to accept the minutes of February 14th.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
I have, I have it up. Hi, Scott wasn't here, Campwood.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
It's twice, Scott.
Two of those, one from the...
Yes, sir. I have another decision for us to sign, I just feel like I've misplaced it.
That's an update?
Amongst all these things. So many of them.
Is there an update on the Birm?
There is no update. The review, like to the chair, from my perspective, I'm sure you're probably aware, during our evaluation of the site and preparing the bond reduction estimate, what we discovered was that 18, I believe it was 18 drainage manholes had been paved over, I'm able to locate them. So because of that, we have contacted Gallo to advise them of that, so I don't feel comfortable at this point coming up with an estimate, not knowing exactly what the extent is of the work now required to remediate this concern, this issue. Obviously, all 18 manholes need to be raised, grade, and we'll essentially have 18 patches in the road.
Bill, what was, was there any, was the reason why they missed, they covered?
Stephen Gallows, I believe in his email, indicated he was not overseeing, probably because at the time, the drainage work was being performed, so it's something that he was not aware of, and unfortunately, having paved, while getting prior approval to pave, these things that get missed, if you try to rush it to the very end, like we've done at that time, trying to get the work done before the end of the winter, these are things that can happen. And so until they go back and adjust all these, you know, and then the board and I think the engineer's office can either decide, is this something that's going to be acceptable in the end, because you can raise them and patch them and infrared the joints, and my concern is they break up, they crack, and it's not the same as a complete new job. So there is some concern with that.
So would we want to think about that even before we had him do anything, so if they didn't say, "Let us do it," and then now you're telling us we got to do it all over again?
I think we, yeah, I think we have to think about, are we going to allow him to infrared the joints and see what this finished product looks like? I think that's what he's requesting. What I don't know is, these were probably steel plated, okay, so it's not just a matter of jackhammering around the manholes. If there's a four by four or four by, depending on the size of these steel plates, these openings and patches could become pretty large. And that coupled with the concerns I had with the berm, again, he recommended or suggested a new method that he was familiar with or someone has spoken to him about, basically heating the berm and resurfacing it back to restore it to like new condition. I've never seen it done, and it seemed quite costly. So if you can't repair the berm to the condition satisfactory to itself, the other engineer and the planning board, then how do you replace the berm? You can't just replace it, you've already paved the road, so now you have an issue of how you're going to do that. So I think it all kind of snowballs into, what are we going to do now? And it may ultimately require a meeting, and I think at one point he had requested a site visit, so maybe it would be viable to do that before he proceeds with any additional work to have a site visit. Between yourselves and the engineer's office and Mr. Gallo and the town planner, you walk in and say, these are the issues, how are we going to address that moving forward? So that's, that's the update in terms of the bond reduction. Obviously, at this point, I don't feel comfortable doing any calculations, looking unknown of what's, how are we going to move forward?
And on the SAS, well, I don't know what the other board members, I'm going to listen to what you advise us on, and I already see John making, that he has an opinion on it also.
Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we tell them not to final pave?
He was not given permission to pave. He had asked to pave several occasions, and in fact, I have the dates all written out because we went through all of this, and when his contractor had called me, I said, "No, you cannot pave." And then he will forward the paving on Saturday on her own. So that was the concern.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but isn't it at the bottom of the street, the two catch bases, the water pools behind them, even after the final paving?
I'd have, is some, one of the houses underwriting is water bleeding off the side. I'm not, I don't think that's coming off the road, but there is...
As far as infrared, you know as well as I do, it just makes the pavement brittle. It's going to break up, it's going to act at the lice man. You'd have to pulverize it, grind the whole road. Even when you grind the road, patch cracks will reflect through the final paving two or three years down the road.
Yeah, so that's, we're going to have to look at that and make a decision how we're going to move forward.
All right, I think in the absence of Mr. Gallo or one of his representatives, that we'll wait until we set up a meeting and either do the site walk as you advised and with us and him, and let this happen before, because this has been, since they've been there, it's been, the whole thing since anybody, it's been nothing but problems. It's always been a nightmare, the, all the silt and the thing, everything has. So I think before we do anything further, we got to have a crystal clearing and writing as to what we're going to do and what we're going to allow them to do that we're going to be okay with.
How much of a body are we still holding?
Seven thousand.
Can we do the whole road run?
Got it.
That's what's going to happen.
We have to make a...
What else here? We got another signature?
I have one decision, this for 45 Sawyers Street, TACC Realty, voted on our last...
Open space, please.
Yep, this will be for Mr. Brooks, Mr. Egan, and Mr. Renterstock.
That, while we're saying, I have a question. What is the legal billable lot in a town of all the present development?
Depending on the zone.
Our...
60,000 square feet, 180 feet of frontage.
So that falls outside that zone, the development up there off of Rodgill Street?
That's in that zone, but an open space gives you a density bonus, so you can have twice the amount of lots if you have 40% open space.
You need to show that you have the adequate amount of open space. I think we have to show what an open space conventional development would look like and be allowed, and then show how many from based on that we could get or we should allow for open space.
Generally speaking, I don't want to discuss that other project in open meeting without it being open, but in generally speaking, it's a procedure, a common practice for a lot of planning boards, in their subdivision rules and regulations, to require a conventional and an open space plan. And the open space residential development special permit that we have is encouraged to be allowed by right. So we're, in time, over the course of the next year, we're going to get rid of that special permit one way or the other, but we're going to require all folks to come to preliminary with both an open space plan and a conventional plan, so the board can choose what goes to define it.
And also try to eliminate in the A and B zones, potential for...
Yeah, we'll file that under additional content, the potential to examine hammerhead lots in the future, whether it should and shouldn't be allowed.
Yep.
That's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else by anyone? Any public comments?
Make a motion.
Have a make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.